Order. We'll have roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Dustin? Not yet. Uh Jake? He's in traffic. Ashley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh I'll go down to agenda amendments. I have two. Uh one is the corn fest and the second one A would be corn fest, B would be the pool. Are there any others? Can I have a motion?
I'll offer, Ashley.
I'll second Paul.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh public participation uh called upon. We just got Bob, so we'll just go Bob, you've got the floor. Remember to turn, yep, there you go.
So thanks Mayor Council staff. I just wanted to give everybody an update as far as where we're at with the 2019 utility and state improvement project. Um obviously, we got a couple phases done last year. Uh I actually included a map in the uh outline that I provided for the agenda. So basically in that map, if it's in color, the red and yellow areas are the ones that were substantially completed last year. The contractor started on the green and blue earlier this year in May. Um construction seems to be going well. Um if you remember, last year, we had some challenges with wet weather. This year, we've got some challenges with dry weather. We haven't had a lot of rain, which uh obviously results in dust and things like that. I think we're doing a good job of addressing those and keeping the dust down. So overall, project is going well on schedule. Um what I wanted to really talk about this evening is if you on Fifth Street Northwest uh between Pacific and Jefferson down through the ravine, on the east side of that ravine, right now, there is a control structure that controls the amount of water that actually goes under Fifth Street, down through Central Park and ultimately into Big Stone Lake. Um that control structure was installed, I don't even know exactly what year it was installed, but basically to prevent the culvert beneath Fifth Street from plugging. It was uh installed to allow silt and sediment in the stormwater runoff runoff to settle out before being washed directly into Big Stone Lake. Then it was also installed the control stormwater that were entering Central Park. We've had some concerns from some neighboring property owners that during rain events, that storm uh or control structure results up on the private property. Uh we've been in contact with the watershed. Been, uh I think we actually have been talking about this for probably at least nine months, maybe even more. And where we're at right now uh through multiple discussions, uh meetings, things like that is ulterior on the east side of Fifth Street Northwest. So basically, we're gonna basically put a new culvert in underneath Fifth Street Northwest. That's gonna allow the water to go right on through, right into Central Park and then ultimately right into Big Stone. Proposing to um I guess offset the elimination of that control structure is right now, the control structure on the east side of Fifth Street Northwest is also on some property on the west side of Fifth Street Northwest. And the water goes right through the property that the city owns. So one thing that we're proposing possibly do or one option that we wanted to give the city is to simply build a berm in that ravine area on the west side of Fifth Street Northwest. Basically allow the backing up of storm water once it goes beneath the street and Central Park. And it would also result in you give a chance for silt and sediment to settle out of the storm water before it goes into Central Park and ultimately right into Big Stone Lake. Um we figured we would talk to Riley Brothers Construction uh since they're they're doing the work. Uh they gave us an estimated cost to construct that berm. Uh it would be approximately $20,000 to construct that berm in conjunction with the project. Now, one thing that I wanna make clear to the to the install this berm, um it's just an alternative for hopefully providing some benefit to storm water, reduce sediment and silt from entering Big Stone Lake uh to the control structure that's right now on the east side. So again, approximately $20,000 to install that berm on the west side. Um and would hopefully again allow silt sediment, allow us to control the storm water that's entering Central Park after we 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 remove that control structure on the east side of Fifth Street Northwest. I did in the outline that I provided, I actually provided a couple addicts just kinda showing what that berm. With that being said, are there any questions or comments on that information?
But Bob, I got one question. Is is there a neighbor concern or neighbors?
Neighbor. Neighbor. Yep, there's a we've had a a concern from one one individual that's come forward.
When it comes to doing this, Bob? Is is there any possibility that you said you talked to the watershed since technically in some ways this is a water, not only our problem, but a watershed problem? Is there any way that there's any available for this help from them to keep our costs down?
They have indicated that they they do not have any funds for these types of projects is what they've indicated. Now, we could possibly, if the city wants to move ahead with it, check with some county resources. But right now, the watershed has indicated that they do not have any money available.
And and one other question, um you know, this isn't showing any opposition to the project. But I grew up in Ortonville. What would happen if we just let the culvert do what it did when I was growing up? When you got a flash flood or something, it it went right down through the park, cleaned everything out and went into the lake or you know what I'm asking? I mean, or or do we definitely have to put this berm in?
You don't definitely have to put it in, Gene. Um I I know there's a there's pretty strong evidence that where the control structure is on the east side of Fifth Street Northwest, that there has been a significant amount of silt and sediment. And you can ask Sam and and Scott this, they probably know more than me, but it it looks to us like anyway that there has been a significant amount of silt and sediment that has settled out of storm water over the years. Because the water right now, as a result of that stormwater, sir, control structure is allowed to sit there for a while and silt and sediment is allowed to settle out before it it moves on downstream and ultimately into Big Stone Lake. If we don't put this berm in, Gene, I think you will see over time, there will be more silt and sediment that does enter Big Stone Lake. Is it a huge issue compared to what's entering the lake other places? I really can't answer that question. Um but again, it just allows us to first of all, control the amount of water going to Central Park. I know some people have indicated, I've seen a couple of or one individual report that has has expressed some concern with erosion within Central that live in town, that there is not a a problem with erosion in Central Park. So again, you're probably, you know, somebody like Scott and yourself or others that have lived there for a long period of time would probably be the most knowledgeable on whether there is a problem with erosion in Central Park or not.
Well, I I think one thing in, I agree with what you're saying, but one thing is, is I don't think we had as much water. I think the water said shed district or somehow, there's more water going through there than than we'd had. The only time we had any backup there when I was a kid was in in the spring. Never never, but there's there is a substantial, I think, more water going going through there. One last question. Part of the reason that we put that stand pipe in there, I understand, was because the the culvert would get plugged? Is this gonna, you know, we're gonna, I I'm not against putting the the water shed down below, but are we still gonna end up having problem with the culvert getting plugged?
That's a good question, Gene. What we're gonna likely do is put a what we call a safety grate over the upstream end of that culvert, which basically there's some bars there that would hopefully prevent anything from really totally plugging that culvert up. With that being said, as a lot of you know, the water does come down the ravine from the north, um which there could be some floating debris.
Yeah.
Things like that that may pardon some of the the flow through there. Um I guess I just can't flat out answer that with a yes or no. Uh we're gonna do what we can do to try to prevent that from happening, Gene.
Okay. I'm I'm not fighting this, but all we're doing is moving the problem from the east side to the west side. I I'm assuming, I'm making an assumption here, Bob, that you're going to get easements though before we do the west side.
Yeah, the actual berm itself would be on city property itself. The only thing that we would probably need easements for uh is to for in the future to allow city staff to get in there and maintain it uh and to initially build it. I think we would probably be looking for an easement from the property owner just to the north of what the city owns, just so we can we can get in there and actually construct the berm. And then also, we would want probably a long term even for the city to be able to get in there and maintain it, uh take the sediment out of there if necessary, things like that.
Hey, Bob, how do you feel about that estimate? Do you feel like that's pretty accurate? High, low?
Really accurate. I will say this, um I I but we wanna keep our options open in the future. And let's say two, three, four years from now, if you wanna have somebody come in and do it, it's probably gonna be more costly, Ashley, because right now, the material to build that berm is gonna be coming off the adjacent streets. They're actually gonna use, right now, there's a fair amount of rip. We're hoping to actually salvage some of that and use it on the dike on the west side. So I feel right now, it's a fair price and I think in if you hold off and wanna do something in the future, it is gonna be more costly.
Sam, do you think this is a good plan, a good option?
I think it is. Um if if the city is interested in controlling, trying to control storm water, the volume of storm water going through Central Park as well as minimizing the amount of silt and sediment entering Big Stone Lake. If you feel that, you know, there is not a an erosion problem in Central Park and, you know, given the entire amount of water that enters Big Stone Lake, we're not really concerned about the silt and sediment, then I would say you're probably fine without putting the berm in. I just know that obviously there was a reason that the original control structure was installed. And we're just giving the city an option at this time, which we think would be most cost effective if you wanna do it, to do it at this time, to hopefully try to offset the elimination of the existing control structure on the east side.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Um, no, you know, it's just uh you know, it it is the right thing to do. Unfortunately, it's more money than I thought it was gonna be, but it's a fair price. I I I'm certain of that because of the dirt access and the and the rock. So I I guess, you know, I yeah, I'd be in favor of of going forward with it on the west side of the street.
Do we, Shar, are we at this point, do we wanna make a resolution to do it or?
I think we better because if the contractors gets going down there, they're gonna wanna start the project.
Okay.
I'll make that resolution.
All right, Ashley made the resolution. Can I have a second?
Oh, I'll second it, Paul.
Paul? Okay, we need a, is there any more discussion? Anybody? Okay, we'll start with Paul.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Uh Mike?
No.
Is Jake on?
No.
Dustin?
No.
Okay, myself, yes. Uh resolution passes. I guess we'll just turn it over to Shar and Bob and and go from there.
Thank you. Um does anybody have any other questions regarding the project in general?
I I guess I would.
Go ahead, Paul.
Bob, what about the uh last year's project, the the grass seeding? Is there concern? I mean, we've been missing the rains as far as watering, getting that grass started. Uh I I imagine you've addressed that or what are your thoughts there?
Well, we're having a construction meeting coming up here on Thursday, and that definitely is a topic of discussion. Basically, the way our specifications are written, Paul, is it's up to the contractor to make sure that he provides us a good product when it comes to turf establishment. And until he they provide that, we're not gonna pay him in full for it. And we've done that on past projects as well, and there is some maintenance requirements that are included in the contract. So yeah, that's definitely gonna be a topic of discussion coming up here on Thursday's construction meeting that, you know, without the rains, they are expected to water that and get satisfactory turf established in all those areas.
Okay, is is there something that we could do for the homeowners, you know, along there? Just so they don't, they aren't responsible for having to water it, the contractor is. But could could we offer it up in the paper that, you know, feel free to water that? That would certainly help.
Absolutely. I mean, when it comes to turf establishment, we have yeah, yeah, when it like I said, when it comes to turf establishment, everybody seems to be a little bit different as far as a property owner. Some people will go out there and they will take care of it. As soon as it's planted, they'll take ownership of it, water it, do whatever they need to do. And then some people take a more hands off approach. But yeah, I mean, if some if we wanna put something into the paper notifying people if they wanna go water it or do whatever, um yeah, feel free to do so. I would say this, we probably wanna be a little bit cautious like that coming. We do wanna probably deter people from going out and spraying those areas because right now, it is still the contractor's responsibility to make sure that they provide a good product in the end. And if people are going out there and spraying it and killing that young grass, if it does start to come or they're affecting the seed that's in there right now, the contractor may have some some leg to come back and say, hey, you know, residents, we're out uh putting chemical on this stuff, which ultimately we feel killed it. Um we wanna be compensated for those areas. So watering, by all means, yes. Applying chemical and things like that, I would say we we wanna avoid that.
Okay, well, you'll address it on Thursday. That's I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Okay, um anything else that you have, Bob?
I do not have anything else. Um if nobody has anything else for me, I'm gonna go ahead and I think exit the meeting and everybody have a great evening.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Um we're gonna go, we're now, we have no public hearing, so we're going down to eight. Uh we're eight A one. Uh we'll just draw, we'll Paul, if it's okay, we won't even discuss that. Um we'll just take it back to you and you guys to meet with uh is it Mike Jacobson? He'll be at the next planning, yeah.
But you better do the consent agenda, don't you think?
Yeah.
Oh, you wanna do, oh, I'm, okay, I I was gonna do that under the, that's okay, that's fine. Consent agenda. Corn, we had corn fest. Didn't we do the consent agenda? Or we talked about it, I'm sorry. Need, uh we did the corn fest in the pool.
No, we
Okay, then I, but I was gonna put that under, I, we had a motion for it, right?
Yeah, but I suppose you put that under new business or something.
I did put in a new, we can, yeah, we can do that now too.
I'll offer the motion for the accept the consent agenda, is that we're
We did, yeah, we did.
Yes, I will, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Um eight one, A A one, recommendation to increase the building permit fees. We're gonna defer that back because they're gonna meet, they'll be able to meet with Mike Jacobson on that and come up with something else. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, we recommend an amending the chicken ordinance of eighteen oh six. Paul, you wanna make a motion for that and then we'll get the discussion?
I'll make the motion to amend that ordinance eighteen oh six.
You're offering the first reading of an ordinance.
Yes, yes.
The first reading for that ordinance.
We need a second?
I'll second, Ashley.
Ashley seconds it now. Any discussion?
Curious of how we came up with eight.
We've had, we've had one request and that was kind of the number that was requested.
Okay, okay.
Hard thing, we, there's nobody else that has requested in town, and this particular one is on the edge of town with the larger property as a red. So that's, there's no magic number in that, but that's the reason.
Sounds good to me.
Um do we have to take a roll call on this, Shar?
Why do I have to take a roll call on this first reading? Yes.
Well, if nobody else has discussion, we'll take a roll call. Ashley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dustin here yet?
No.
No, okay, and I'm Jake isn't. Myself, yes. That's for the first reading. Um next one is recommendation to send the uh American Legal Publishing on the uh code changes. We just need a motion on that.
Need a resolution on that.
Do you have a resolution? Okay.
I'll offer the resolution.
Paul offers a resolution. Need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Gotta be a roll call. Okay, Kim?
Maybe I should ask quick. Does that also include the map?
The map is completed.
Okay, and we, I just, you know, like with with the other issue a few months ago, I just wanna make sure we
The map has been good. Apex Engineering, they have helped us get the map correct, and I believe
Okay.
zoning people have approved it.
Perfect, okay. Yep, good to go.
Okay, Ashley?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Resolution carries. Uh next on it is
Staff reports.
Staff reports, because I know, go ahead.
Okay, I have, I have something that I I do wanna leave it until we get to the pool down on New Business.
Oh, okay, yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, but I think Jesse needs to speak here.
Yep, go ahead, Jesse.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so about two weeks ago, um I have nothing from the actual golf board because I hadn't gotten the final update. But about two, oh, we lost one of our fairway mowers, went down, and we sent it to the cities to get evaluated. And I heard back Friday, um unfortunate, our old one, but if we want to fix it, it's going to be eight to twelve thousand. That's their guesstimation range. And the mechanic I talked to basically said it would be stupid to fix it due to the reason that it has seven thousand eight hundred dollars. It's from nineteen ninety-eight. Yeah, he was actually very impressed with the seven thousand hours, but so I guess I'm just wondering, I was looking at some prices today. Kinda wondering what you want me to do.
Are Jesse, are you gonna be able to, like you usually do find it, obviously, we're talking used?
Yep.
Okay, have you done any checking at all with your rep or are you just in the process?
The used quality that has like the warranty and stuff, which is throughout, I would prefer to go, you know, not sorry, not just getting something and hoping. Their gold warranty stuff, we're looking at the thirty to forty thousand range. Who, new? New is fifty-seven to sixty-five thousand for new.
Okay, how rapidly, how fast do we have to move on this or or should we?
So we're running, that we're running with right now, we still have one, which is fine. But my only concern is what if, say, something happens, you know, a situation where you have to send it to get fixed? And then it's a week and a half, mow every, almost every day, and then we have a fairway mower, still.
Um Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Uh so it it's a fairway mower, so that's that gang mower.
Um, yep.
So you're not doing the the shortcut, is that? Is that that new one that the city street department got, you know, for parks? Would that work in a pinch?
The new one that the city, the new one the city got?
Yeah.
Depends on what height it goes down to, but
You know, if you got in a bind, I I'm not saying we don't move on a new one for you or a used one, but
We don't have to like move extremely fast due to the fact that if we got in a bind, we could technically drop that big forty-seven that we got, that new rough mower about five years back. We could in fairways where they wouldn't get out of control, you know, it wouldn't be like a normal fairway height on a golf course, but it wouldn't like, it's not like it would get out of control.
Oh.
Oh, we could, we could get by if something did happen to our, the unit we have right now.
Do we, so with that in mind, do we want, I guess my question is, do we wanna authorize an amount up to? Or do we want him to get bids and then?
I would prefer bids.
Well, he's gonna have to get bids anyway, Ashley.
Yeah.
I'm sa, he's got to get, we we can't buy it without bidding. But what I'm saying is, does he get the bids? And we say he can go up to whatever it is he goes up to and no more than that. Or do we want him to go out and get the bids and then wait another two weeks and come back?
That's what I would prefer, for him to come back to us with the bids.
Okay.
Sure.
Like we've done with all the other equipment, I guess.
My question, Jesse, is how busy are you up there? I mean, are we looking at a good year or has it been down considerably?
We're up lately in memberships and like trail fees, but we were down in green fees so far this year, like green fees and cart rentals have been down.
Okay. But it's being used pretty steadily.
Yeah, it's actually, I'd say it's been pretty good, you know, from what I, I didn't know what to expect with everything going on and stuff, but it's been pretty good. And if better, I would do two person cart.
Okay.
Shar, what's that gonna do to his budget?
Well, it's not gonna do anything. I mean, his budget is is kind of lacking this year with the, without the greens fees and the cart rentals anyway. Um I I think in his situation, it's really hard to keep a budget when you have old equipment like that, when you have a seasonal type thing.
Jesse, can we, can we lease one till the end of the year?
Oh, there's all kinds of leasing options too. But I don't know leasing, I don't know if they do like rentals for summers type stuff, you know? I think it's more like you lease to buy.
And that's how we purchased the last mower, isn't it?
Yep, that's how we, that's how we paid for the forty-seven hundred, which is our rough.
Paid it over, over um five years, I believe.
Hmm.
Well, then, um let's go with Ashley's suggestion. We don't even have to, we don't really have to vote on this. But Jesse, you go ahead and next meeting, bring the information and we'll go from there. And decide what side what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and I I apologize. It's, and like I said before, though, that's I don't wanna open a can of worms, but it's far from the end with the equipment that we have here too. I mean, the one that we're, we have now that's running, I would say that's got a max life of about four years left on it too, so.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, Jesse, because I'll be honest with you. You don't come to us and ask for something that is not necessary. You've been really good. You always go out and find good equipment at a reasonable price. So if you can do that again, we'll work with you.
Yes, I'll just go out and get some bids then on, you know, something that is used, but obviously worth purchasing. We'll go from there.
Good. Um we got, Shar, I'm sorry, anybody else have any more staff reports?
I I'm just waiting for the pool to talk about this.
Okay. Um, why don't, we can go to that right now. Let's go to the pool right now.
Okay, um I think you all realize that the city's crew has been spending a lot of time working on the pool and our head life, um our head pool director has been spending a lot of time. And we are able to, we've chairman from the public health sector, we can able to open this pool safely for our kids in Ortonville and other rounding, surrounding areas to um basically to swim. So in the packet, or I sent out, I guess, an email since it didn't get here quite in time. I have a, we have a list of lifeguards that we would like to approve tonight, and we all, Emily also has, has the um fees that we'd like to charge for the two thousand twenty season. Our goal is to begin the operation or pool July first. Um maybe earlier depending on the number of lifeguards, you know, the lifeguards have gotten other jobs now. So Emily's spent a lot of time getting them. She's got, I believe, eight, nine of them, so she can work. But a lot of them are part timers, so we would like to open the pool from one to five on a daily basis. If we can't find enough lifeguards for certain days, we may have to cancel. But we're not the only pool. Most of the pools are struggling with lifeguards to to run the season because they got other jobs.
What is the pool capacity at fifty percent?
Eighty, eighty swimmers or eighty people, seven hundred and sixty people.
Emily, how would you feel about putting a max? Emily, how would you feel about putting a max on the size of group then, so that we are able to let enough of the Ortonville residents and those coming here, if pools are closed from other places? I mean, if we have a busload that comes over from Millbank that typically does to our pool at least once a week, that's gonna really take away from our community being able to utilize it if they're bringing over, you know. I don't, I don't know exactly how many they bring over, but I do know sometimes they can bring over quite a few. So how do we feel about kind of putting a group limit on Emily?
Yeah, Shar and I have been talking about that, because yeah, if Millbank comes over, that's a good, like, at least half our kids, like, that can't come in right there. They usually bring around like, I'd say anywhere from forty to sixty, so we were talking definitely if they came over, we would have to limit how many they bring over at the time and, um, then have to figure out from there, and they'd obviously have to let us know, let us know ahead of time.
Would it be, would it be wiser just to kind of put a cap on a group coming over of fifteen?
Yeah, um.
I mean, I don't want to deter Millbank from coming, however, that could really cause issues.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Well, but also, now, maybe I'm wrong, how often? What's the daily census, average daily census at the pool? Even though it's, you ever get to full, how often do you get to full capacity?
I think we've maybe hit it once, if even that, I'd say on daily, like, on a day like today, it would probably be around like one hundred, one ten, one twenty, somewhere in that range. But that, yeah, I guess it all depends on the weather and.
Yeah. I, I, I think that we should leave it to Emily, but I, I, I don't like the idea of putting, uh, she's got to coordinate, Millbank and her have to coordinate. You put a limit on it, and, and we could be to the spot where we say they only bring fifteen, and all of a sudden, we've only got thirty of our own kids, and that's where we get revenue from that, that's revenue for it.
But Jean, we also have to take into consideration that the Minnesota guidelines for opening the pool still say we have to maintain as much social distancing as possible.
That's why, that's what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, is we got to coordinate it with Millbank, if you put a limit of fifteen on Millbank, one, they might just decide it's not worth in bringing a bus over, that's good revenue, and two, we might have days when they're coming over and we don't have enough kids in Ortonville to even bring it close to eighty after they bring theirs in. I can see not like that, not bringing sixty, because I don't think their, I don't think their pool's open.
No, it's not.
Well, what about just like designating a certain day? You know, where it could be Millbank, because I agree with you, Jean, that, you know, if we don't have a high enough count, they probably aren't gonna bring a bus over for fifteen kids, so maybe if we just set a day aside that, you know, Millbank Day is a certain day and, and, you know, at least then the local people would know that, that they get first dibs. And if they don't bring as many, then we have extra room for some of the locals.
Another question is, are you gonna have a, you must be counting them, Em?
Yeah, um, we keep track, so, um, the guards at the station, uh, usually they would sign in, but they're just gonna give the name to the guard, and the guards are gonna write it down just to avoid, you know, touching the pens and whatnot. Um, so we'll, we'll keep track that way, we'll have track, yep.
Is there a possibility, have we thought about limiting, if a group does come in, I don't know, how long does Millbank come for?
Um, usually they'd be from around one thirty to about two thirty, three o'clock.
That's, that's not that overly that long a time.
And I'm not even sure, um, I'd have to contact the Millbank OST lady if they are even planning on coming over, because I know they just started their OST up this week or this coming week, I know, so I'm not even sure what her plan is, if she is planning on coming over as normal, or what she's planning on doing.
I, my own, my opinion is, is that it, we leave it up to Emily to talk to Millbank. We don't need to have a rule coming from us, she, she's got, she's the head of the pool, she's got a good head on her shoulders. And if she sees it starting to become a problem, I think she can, I think she can handle it.
Could I ask?
Paul?
So can we do swimming lessons, or how does that work?
Um, I think swimming lessons is gonna be pretty difficult. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to have group lessons, it'd have to be one-on-one if we were doing that. Um, but with that, um, we would have to get face shields for our, um, WSI. And then we can't have contact with the kids, so we would need a parent there. And with that, we only have three to four WSI. But they, I mean, not everybody's working every day, like some of the WSI can only work once, twice a week because they have other jobs. And so it would get pretty difficult trying to schedule lessons and then with the rules.
Okay, yeah, I, I've had people question that, and I thank you for that answer, I didn't know how that worked.
Yeah.
Can I, I got a question for Sam, so how, so the pool is full, I mean, you're hands-on there, Sam, with it?
Yeah, pools, um, all the chemicals and stuff have leveled off after this weekend, chlorine and pH and all that stuff balanced, so.
Okay, so your end of it, your end of it is good to go, it's just getting everybody else with, with the guards and everything?
Yeah, and they have to schedule an inspection yet too, but other than that, yeah, pool's ready.
And then the inspection will be Friday, it's already been set.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And even if, even if we can only, my opinion is, even if we can only open it, Emily, if you can only find enough lifeguards to open it up for, for three hours, but we've got unbelievably hot weather coming up here. And if, I, I think we're gonna start, the phone calls are gonna start coming in, so if we could even bump it up before the first, I'm not saying it has to be every day, I'm not even saying it has to be a full, but if you can work something out, I think that's strictly up to you.
I think a stopped opening would be probably really nice for you, Emily.
Yeah.
If you're able to, like even just two days or something, if lifeguards are available.
Yeah, I've been working on that, it's just pretty difficult right now to get lifeguards to work, because obviously, most have gotten other jobs and are trying to work it out. Um, I'm still trying to even get July lifeguards all figured out, um, so, yeah, I don't, I'll try.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I mean.
It's up to you.
Can get the guards, absolutely, but I just don't know what the numbers and how it will work out.
Yeah. Well, and it, it, it has nothing to do with you, Emily, we, we totally understand.
And it's a different way of operating this year than it has been in the past, you know, so I think everyone has a little bit of grace here too with how we're moving along and processing through it. So, I mean, a lot of people's jobs have changed their workflow just because of how sanitary we need to be and cautious and be on top of it, so you're doing great, Emily.
Thank you.
I think the residents of Ortonville are gonna be very happy that the pool's opening, Facebook has been all about it.
Yeah.
So, we're working hard on it.
Yeah.
Hey, Jean, you gotta make a, we need resolutions approving the.
Approving the fees?
And the fees.
Can I have a resolution approving?
For the hiring of the lifeguards and the fees.
Okay, Ashley, we need a second.
I'll second.
Kim seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a roll call, we'll start with Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, okay, Ashley?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, got everybody? Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution carries, the next thing, uh, Corn Fest. I was at a meeting today, right, as of right now, they're gonna go through, they're gonna have Corn Fest. They're, they're eliminating a bunch of stuff, and all they really wanted to ask at this point in time is that they can have the park. And I don't know, do we even need to vote on that? Shar? They just.
I think it's been just kind of natural.
Unnatural to it.
In August, Corn Fest.
And, and they're still, they're, right now, they're tentatively planning on the, the parade, they're gonna wait and see what's going, if there's any restrictions. That's not till August, but they would have, they have to, then that'd be up to them though to put in for the permit for the parade, correct?
Yes, they have to take care of that.
Yeah, so we're, we're committed to them doing, having it right now, and they can have the, have it down there. Um, we talked about, let's see, where are we down here, okay?
I'd like to say I'm behind Corn Fest all the way, I've seen a reaction of people in other communities with their community activities just dropping off. August is a little ways away, I'm hoping that things also continue to change, crowd gatherings are different, all of that, so I'm happy we're staying on the course for Corn Fest. I think it's great for our community.
We're gonna, they, they said one of the things they're gonna do is they're not gonna have a band this year, they might have some music. They're still gonna have the, uh, like a beer gardens, but it's not gonna be the beer gardens, they're not gonna have tables set up for people to sit. They're gonna, uh, they're gonna try to cut the food vendors down possibly, so that the, that the food vendors will only be on one side, and they'll be separated farther than they were before. They've taken a lot of, they're moving in the right direction. So, and I just said, i- i- as long as, that we're not gonna tell them what they can and can't do, we don't feel that that's our position. But they're down for the weekend, for the, that weekend of Corn Fest for having the park, and as we get closer, we'll discuss it more.
Would there be any need for application for a liquor license or anything, I mean, that could be done on short notice too?
Yeah, we can do that, there, there's, there will only be one, that, that, they're, Rosa's gonna do it again. Little early to be getting up or going to bed, Paul.
I don't think that was me, was it?
Happy hour.
That was a good one, Kim, okay, um. Ten A under new business also now is bids on city lots, what do we have to do on this, Shar?
Well, if you're going to accept these, these three bids, then you have to have a first reading of an ordinance to move forward.
Oh, offer.
Kim offered the first?
Ashley did.
I'm sorry, I'm looking right at you, Kim. We need a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds, is there any more discussion on this? Okay, uh, we'll start with Kim?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Dustin and Jake aren't here yet, they are, they speak up. The only thing else that I see that we have is make a motion to pay the bills. Resolution. Got your call yet?
Go ahead.
Do we do anything with that email that we received? That you put in the packet right at the end?
Wasn't that the pool stuff?
No.
No, that was that lot.
Yeah, was there anything we needed to do with that?
Oh.
Um, from Wheatmen, White Men?
You know, I didn't even get that in my packet. Or was it an email and I didn't?
Yeah, it was an email right at the end, they're looking maybe for more clarification?
On, on what was it, Ashley, go ahead.
Um, it's, it's those lots that we are changing for them to be able to build that home on two lots.
Yeah, now they, they've sent an email, Jean, stating, stating they are not wanting to put a bid in on that because there's restrictions on it.
What are the, what are their restrictions?
They have to start building in a year and end in two, they, they don't.
They don't want that? I thought they were in a hurry to build a house.
They, they felt they wanted more time.
Are they, Shar, are they, are they clear on it, because here, this first one, it says unclear about what terms?
Terms are, you know, for the first lot, you know, this lot, Dave made it as, it could start in two years and be done in three. And the first lot, the first lot that was purchased was start in one and be done in two. But they, they have, they have copies of it, but they, they don't want to start, I remember at the beginning, they were talking about the fact that they needed more time to, to get this house on the lots and, than we were offering. So, when I, when I talked to Dave, he said, you know, it is a concern because people purchase lots like this and sometimes never put a house on them if there's no restrictions.
So, question, so the one lot, they want two lots, right?
Correct, they want those two lots.
So, one of the lots says build in two years?
No, no, the, the first lot that was sold, you know, the first four, four ordinance, the first one, first ordinance said it's one, one year to begin and two years to end, so those seven lots were blanket ordinance, so then those people came to you and asked if they could buy two lots and only build one house.
Okay.
But, but they wanted more time, so then when Dave wrote the ordinance up, he, I guess he said begin in two years and end in three, which they don't, they want an indefinite period of time to begin and to end, they don't want restrictions.
Well, I, I, if, if he's got beginning within two and end within three, I don't think that is unrealistic.
Is that what they meant by unclear in item two A?
I, I have no idea, I, I, they, we sent a copy of the ordinance to them, the ones that was approved at the last, I believe, the last city council meeting.
Was that the first meeting, or, I'm sorry, first reading?
No, it's been, no, it's, it's been a second reading been published, and you know, right away, they, as they said, they didn't want to have any restrictions. And they were feeling that, that you probably were not going to have restrictions on the lot, so they weren't. I guess they thought they were going to put a bid on it, but there are prices already set, so I did talk to Shady Oaks about that, and they, they really didn't realize that they weren't purchasing them, they were drawing up a purchase agreement, so they were gonna contact them. And I've never heard another thing.
Okay.
Well, I think for the price that we dropped those lots to, there's gotta be, I mean, otherwise, we're never gonna recoup anything on.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're unreasonable at all. And, but start within two and end within three, I was under the impression that we had to move so fast on this because they wanted to start.
No, it was the other way, they didn't want to start, they thought they would have problems getting a house. And according, according to Shady Oaks, that there's a lot of houses in areas going up a lot faster than even the first year, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's a concern.
It, it's been, it's been, the resolution on that double lot for them has been, the ordinance has changed, and it's there for them, it's up to them.
That's basically what the city attorney said.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Good.
And, and so then that'll be available for not just them, but anyone that would meet those, would meet that then, right?
Oh, I suppose, on those two lots, I suppose, not the rest of them, because.
Not the rest of them, because when we, when we changed that ordinance, we told David we didn't want it changed to, to a degree that every time somebody wanted to buy a lot, we'd have to go through this, this is just on those two lots.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we need a resolution to pay the bills.
I can offer that.
Ashley?
I can second that.
Kim seconds that, we'll go around the horn, Mike?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I'll.
Anything?
So I, I did have one thing with.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, that's done, that resolution passes, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, just with the wins we've had and, and the branches and the amount of stuff, um, I wonder, Shar, if we could get a notice or some, do we ever notice on, on the hours of the tree dump? I don't know if some people are unclear, um, in fact, I don't know for sure.
I believe our, the hours are on the website.
Okay.
For people, you know.
It's the first and the third?
First and the third Saturdays it's open, it'll be open this Saturday from nine to three.
Vicky, would you be able to kind of put another notice up on Facebook for us and on the website, just to reiterate that availability?
I can do that.
Thank you, Vicky.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Vicky, thank you for all of the other updates you've been doing. They look great on Facebook, by the way. The city crew down by the lake and all of that stuff. It's been great.
Thanks. The city crews made it pretty easy for me to post those things.
They're pretty photogenic, aren't they?
Yeah, they are. Those, those vehicles are just.
Does anybody else have anything?
I did have some compliments on that beach. They put more sand down into swimming beach in that pier. Uh, you know, kids, kids are using that this past weekend.
Yeah, it's just too bad. I don't care what the poor guys do down to the pier. The next morning, it's like they didn't touch it. It doesn't make any difference.
I know I had visited with Dustin on, you know, you see some of these, um, wire type things that are on, on canopies of boat lifts and things like that to keep the birds off of there. And I don't know if there's something like that we could try and put out there, although they're kind of expensive. But he was gonna do some checking on that. But I don't know. Maybe at this point, there's nothing more. I don't, to discourage them coming up on there.
You know, I, it used to be, I can remember several years ago on Memorial Day weekend, they would clean the, the pier on Friday. And I'd put the flags out either at, right after they did it or Saturday morning, and they'd stay away for a couple of days. They're, they go up, they're practically helping me put the flags out now. They don't, it doesn't bother them at all.
Is there, is there any, just another subject, uh, with the meetings, are we gonna go back to, you know, at, at either the library or at the community center? Or do we have to continue with this? I'd prefer, I guess I'd prefer it, you know, in person. And then if there's people attending, maybe schedule a time when they could be there. Or what's everyone else's opinion?
You just set the chairs six feet apart. We're good to go.
Well, the, the library is not open, library basement is not open yet.
But what about the community center?
Well, then we don't broadcast. Then we're not taping it. It's all set up down the basement of that.
Is there a possibility, though, that we could somehow set it up?
Uh, I think it could be, I think we could, there's a possibility of taping. I don't know.
Well, you know, the cameras are already in the, in the wall or the ceiling and stuff down there. We don't have anything that we, I mean, to put it like we're doing, this Zoom is, is at least being recorded and put it on the TV.
Yeah, a lot of people watch this. I'm surprised at how many people come up and make comments. They all like that home sign behind you, Ashley.
No, I'm kind of in agreement with Paul, um, as things are opening back up. How, is everybody back in the city office as well then at the same time? I know the city crew is and everything. And I know the courthouse kind of opened and we were trying to kind of follow with the courthouse.
You know, we're mostly open here. I don't come in every day, but we have, we're open to the public. We still don't advertise that we're open, but we are. Um, when bill paying is, we have a lot of traffic in and out. We're trying to limit that a little bit. But otherwise, I, I think it's pretty normal traffic right now.
Is there any indication with the library or how does that work when they may or may?
I don't know. I, Vicky came in and she was kind of frustrated because they're opening it up a little bit to adults using computers and everything, but I guess they get their information from, from the Wilmer Library, I guess. They make the decisions. And she said, I don't know if we're even gonna be able to have patrons in the, in there to really do real library work until August, maybe. She says, I don't know. And she said, now the basement isn't open. If the city wanted to have a meeting down there, we would have to pay to have it cleaned prior to it and after we were done with it.
Vicky, is there, do you think there's any kind of options that we would be able to look into to be able to be meeting like over at the community center and record or broadcast?
What I did, um, last night for that forum, too, is there were some people on site. So I webcammed it. Um, your audio isn't going to be as good as this, but I can set up some audio options so that it's louder. And those that can make it to the community center, we can have it there. And those that can't can come in on Zoom if you want it like that.
Does, does Zoom qualify on a, on a meeting, like when we take votes and stuff? And if you're not, if we are meeting in person?
Yep.
If anyone that isn't there?
Yep, Dave, Dave said a long time ago that if, if a councilman can't make it and if we wanted to do, he wanted to do a Zoom, that you can do that.
Okay.
Yes, you could have before so many a year, as long as you were in a public location, zoomed in on a meeting. How, there was a couple of them you can do a year that you didn't even have to be. But now with the emergency order, that's, as long as that emergency order is happening, it's very open as far as people coming in on Zoom.
And that emergency order was extended till, what, mid-July or end of July?
Mid-July, I believe it was, yeah.
Okay, well, I, I just, I would prefer it and that's just my personal preference, but, um, you know what? It's up to you guys. Uh, that's just my thoughts.
Well, why don't we, why don't we wait till mid-July? The, the first one in July and wait until
Okay.
the order's done. Because then, then after the order is, is gone, then we probably have to look at what rules we have to follow, different rules. Like, we're under it now, so we can do it. So let's just do, let's handle it that way. Anything else?
Thanks for hanging in there, Sam.
Again. Adjourned.
See you.
Thanks, everyone.